Meeting Fortuna Planning Commission for July twenty seventh. If you wish to be part of the meeting. The schedule for on the Zoom and the public access. The meeting is being held in accordance with the Brown Act due to the COVID declaration. And at some point will be flashing some information up on the board. For everybody can see how to participate if they want to call in.
This meeting is being recorded.
Sorry about that. So if you want to provide. Any comments, there'll be a number and. There'll be a way to call in and be part of this. So we're going to open it up. The meeting, we're gonna start off with the flag salute again with the COVID and all problems. Just so everybody know, there's no disrespect or not like we're all going to stand up and and salute. So I'm going to read it out and. Appreciate everybody. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You get a roll call, please.
Right, Commissioner Blakely.
Here.
Commissioner Bradley.
Present.
Commissioner Hallie.
She was here.
She's here.
Commissioner Hallie.
Stephanie, you're muted.
Can she hear me?
I wonder if her speaker is. She can't hear anything.
Well, she is here, let's. Oh.
Oh, here comes Mark. Also.
All right. Rolling my.
So.
Chairman Mobley.
Here.
Commissioner Rogers or Vice Chair Rogers let me know that he would not be here. Commissioner Sights.
Here, can you hear me?
Yes, and Commissioner Wells also may not be attending. Looks like Stephanie is having some technical difficulty, so they'll carry on while I work with her.
Okay. All right, can we get approval of the June twenty second meeting?
I'll make the motion, we proved the minutes as submitted.
Well, second.
Right, roll call though, Commissioner Blakely.
Yes.
Commissioner Bradley.
Yes.
Commissioner Hallie cannot hear me. Chairman Mobley.
Yes.
And Commissioner Sights.
Yes.
Yeah, hold up a. Sign to show her. Okay. So we're gonna open it up for public comment at this time. Katie's gonna give some information out, gonna flash it up. So anybody. That wants to make comment that is not on the agenda tonight, please call in. Remember speakers, anybody calling in that the planning commission cannot take any action or deliberate on anything at this time. Kay's gonna flash you some information and let you know what's going on. This is the same information that any part of this meeting that you'd like to be. Heard on on in the agenda tonight, there's only one thing on the agenda for the most part. So. Talk about that, this is a way to get on there too. Give this a few minutes to everybody can jot it down. See if we have any takers. Okay, do we getting anybody?
No.
No. Okay, we're gonna close.
Motion that we close public comment at this time.
I'll second that.
Okay. So we're gonna move on to the business at hand, public. Public hearing to consider amendment being the, excuse me, amending. The Fritz Twins Creek subdivision to add a twelve hundred fifty foot underground sewers line. Approving amended mitigated negative declaration of environmental impact. So this, if anybody doesn't know anything about this project, this is. The one over off Redwoodway at the backside of the hospital. So can you get some background, please? What's going on?
Yes, thank you Chairman Mobley and planning commissioners. So the reason this is on the agenda is because the subdivision has been approved. If some of you were there and recall, it was approved. The planning commission reviewed it on June twenty fifth, twenty nineteen and made the recommendation to the council that they approved the subdivision. It's a major subdivision of fifty nine dwelling units on approximately a twelve acre site. And then the city council did approve it on July fifteenth. So it was approved with a tentative map and planning commission also adopted the mitigated negative declaration, which is required. Or some kind of an adoption is required under the California Environmental Quality Act or CEQA. So. Anytime there's a change to a project under CEQA. It's required that the city consider the change and if a supplemental. Initial study or EIR is required. Or if if the change is minor enough where there aren't any significant impacts or changes to the mitigation measures. Then an addendum is approved and that's what's coming to you tonight. And also that the project description for that environmental report, the initial study. Is being amended to add in the new component as well. And then also under just our process or the zoning code, it also requires. Not this, yeah, municipal code. A change and the project is also. You know, we always consider, does this need to go to the planning commission? You know, in our conditions of approval, we usually have that condition that since that staff can approve minor changes and then significant changes go to the planning commission. So this falls in that category. It is an offsite improvement and it involves changing the type of sewer system that's serving that subdivision. And. It involves grading, so it's, you know, it's somewhat not a hugely significant change, but you know, it does definitely warrant. Approval in consideration, so I'm gonna share it and go. Over really quickly and then discuss the addendum process. And then let you consider it. Okay. So this is the project site, this is the site of the subdivision that you approved. Let's see, Redwood Way is down below, so this is kind of upside down where south is to the top, it really. And north is to the towards the bottom, so Redwood Way is in the lower right hand corner. And then the access road that's been constructed enters into the larger part of the subdivision. And then there will be a bridge across the creek and a portion of the lots down here. The sewer system that was proposed would was a sewer lift station, so. The sewage would be pumped. To a certain elevation where then it would gravity feed into the city system in Redwood Way. And let's see, I'll show you, this is the tentative map, it's not a super clear. Version, but this is kind of flipped over now, so Redwood Way is at the top. And the majority of the parcels are in the middle there and there's the little triangle and. I think that's. Is that Mill Creek? Mill Creek, I think. And that, so the source, the lift station would be in this, was supposed to be in this corner, this southeast corner. And then get pumped to Redwood Way where it would gravity flow to the treatment plant. So what they're proposing instead, which from the city's perspective, Public Works, they're really happy about this change. It would gravity feed, so they have the opportunity to extend the sewer main through. So it basically westward through their project and then across an adjoining vacant land. And then ultimately into Strong's Creek Drive over by the Strong's Creek Shopping Center, and I'll show that plan as well. And that would all be gravity, so the whole site will just gravity flow into that main. And that's much more preferred because the lift station, it would have been maintained or. City would have operated a maintenance, created a maintenance. Maintenance district where those property owners would pay into that. For a on an annual basis to basically fund the maintenance and the long term, like the replacement costs. So that would have been a cost to them and then the city would have maintained it. City doesn't take in lift stations normally for city infrastructure, so that's why it would have been maintained. Or the cost of the maintenance would have been by the homeowners association. So and then there's always a possibility of failure, so like a spillage or, you know, emissions into the environment and of course, that's not good. So is all gravity is just, you know, there's no mechanic or no. Machinery or mechanics other than just gravity, so. This shows the overall site, the subdivision is. In red and that's the portion that's all been approved and then the modification would be to eliminate that. Line that the. Lift station and then flow into, this is the, just the schematic of the proposed sewer line that would cross two parcels. And those are shown with the blue boundary and. The entity that owns that land is Precard. So that's the applicant for this amendment is the Fitz, the Fitz. Fitz subdivision, Dennis Fitz, and then the property owner is Precard over here, so. It would flow just gravity flow and then, you know, the other benefit is that this. This stretch of a sewer line is really going to create like, kind of like a missing link where. These vacant parcels, what, you know, if and when they develop, they'll be able to connect. And I think that Pine View, they're on a pressure system and so is. I don't remember the street name, but to the right they are as well and there there have been easements set up. In anticipation of someday connecting, you know, being able to abandon those pressure. Systems and install a sewer line here, so this is really. A component of the city's long range infrastructure plan, so this is really a good thing, you know, overall. And then, of course, there is a main installed in the Strong and Strong Street Drive when that shopping center developed, they were required to. Put in that piece of this overall system. So that's all a good thing. It is, just to go over some of the things here. The stretch is one thousand two hundred fifty linear feet. And then this next plan actually shows a detail, and this is just the parcel itself. The area of disturbance is fifty feet here and seventy five feet here. So the main concern was that, you know, for biological purposes, that they identify. That there weren't any, aren't any wetlands within the area of disturbance, so they just limited it to. You know, to be able to kind of confine their study area. They committed to just having this is their area of disturbance and this is the area that they analyzed. You can see that the larger area is, you know, it's pasture and grassland, so the hay has been mowed and baled here. And there aren't any sensitive resources within this portion. Attached to your staff report is a wetland study that was prepared by GHD. It's been reviewed by the Army Corps of Engineers and preliminarily approved. Have a couple of little legal hoops to go through, but otherwise they've acknowledged that, yes, they agree with the. Method of the study and the findings in the study, so. There won't be any impacts to wetlands as a result of this project and that was, you know, the main thing for our purposes, for secret purposes, we needed to. Confirm that in order to make the findings that this project is similar in nature. With the initial study that's been approved for the Fitz subdivision and won't have any significant impacts. So let's see, so. So I'll go back to this one. Why don't we go back to this one? So under CEQA, lead agencies, of course. Conducted the evaluation of proposed changes to the project to determine a further environmental analysis required. So the Fitz, so we look at the Fitz subdivision and that initial study, which was also attached in your staff report. And you've already adopted it earlier in two thousand nineteen, that's our, like our base. That we're working off of and then looking at this section and if any changes. To the findings in that initial study or in the mitigation measures are warranted. So we staffed review, you know, the initial study and the different categories of review that are in that report, in the written report. And that includes. There we go. So with regards to that secret checklist, there won't be any changes to the topics that are discussed in that report. That includes, there won't be any increase in traffic or greenhouse gas emissions. No changes in air quality, so really, so the activities here, you know, there won't be any. Long term development as far as there won't be any new housing units, no increase in density or anything like that, that would. Increase the traffic or noise or stormwater discharge aesthetics. There won't be any paving, the. The only impact would be during construction, so there's going to be some grading. Trenching, placing the pipe and then filling the trench and, you know, it's going to be restored. To its existing condition, so there won't be any visual or any change in topography or any change in vegetation. So the, that construction phase, you know, this falls under the category of construction phase, which has been. You know, for the Fitz subdivision. Most of the mitigation measures, I think all of them are related to construction, so. You know, the mitigation measures have to do with minimizing runoff and air quality mitigation. Ground disturbance, soil stability and things like that, so all of the mitigation measures that were adopted for the construction of the Fitz subdivision. Will continue to apply to the sewer line construction. And again, because there won't be any long term impacts or visibility or any change. That's going to be sufficient to satisfy CEQA. The construction, the mitigation measures are all under the categories of biological resources, cultural resources. And in this case, the cultural resource condition is that, you know, during construction, if any. Resources are discovered, you know, as they're digging, that construction stop and that they contact inappropriate. You know, archaeological or cultural resource or the local tribes. And that's a condition that's already in place. Soils and erosion control, hydrology and water quality, noise, traffic and circulation, so those are the categories of mitigation. If you want to discuss any of those, we can absolutely do that. You know, I just want to kind of keep this focused on a general discussion and then if you have any questions. We can do that. So the, yeah, the activities are temporary in nature, the site's going to be restored. There's no difference in the type of land that's being disturbed, so that's already covered under the, you know, we did that one focus biological. Study on the wetlands. Other than that, you know, there aren't any biological resources, as you could see, it's all grassland or non-native grassland. So, yeah, the CEQA findings for the addendums to prove the addendum. Are that the substantial evidence shows that the change in the sewer line location does not create any new significant environmental impacts or significant increase. In the severity of impacts that were already discussed in that initial study and adopted in the mitigated negative declaration. Which we've discussed and I think you can visually see that. And that the existing mitigation measures are sufficient to apply to the modified project and again, there aren't any. You know, impacts other than the construction phase and those will be covered in the mitigation measures that are already adopted. And we don't need to create any new ones just for this component. So those are the findings to adopt the addendum and to. Approve that that change in the project description. So with that, the motion is in your pocket and it's also up here on the screen and I'll turn that back to the planning commission.
Okay, anybody got any questions for Liz?
Everybody did their work. I mean, I appreciate it, I know it was a long staff report, I tried to keep it, you know, condensed, but I still needed to give you the full range of the information. For the project and for CEQA, so. And then to give you the mitigation measures and that initial study for your reference, so it seemed like a lot. I think it's, in this case, it's a simple project. And, you know, in staff's opinion, it's straightforward, so hopefully, yeah, it seems like you as well.
So we're just talking, just to make sure that everybody at home's right and. Because I know in the past, there was a lot of talk about this property behind there, behind the. Grocery outlet hub and wetlands and that was some of the reasons why the Strong Creek stopped where it did and. The way it's set up and that kind of thing, so just. So everybody knows, we're not talking about all of that area, we are just talking about on that yellow line. That's the only place that is impacted and they're not going throughout this whole.
Right, yes. And so the wetland specialist from GHD worked closely with the Army Corps of Engineers. And, you know, there was a point of consultation and. So Army Corps of Engineers, of course, you know, they're the ones who. Led the enforcement on the wetlands that are on that site, they're familiar with those and, you know, they worked with the applicant on. It's just limiting the impact study to, you know, the identified study area. So yes, there are wetlands, there's one up here in the right, and then this is the other one, you could see that everything else is mowed. So, you know, the, the protected existing wetlands are the areas that are in green. And, yeah, Army Corps, you know, is part of their database and their, their inventory of wetlands. They definitely, when they review this, they're keenly aware of the existing wetlands that have been identified on that property. And so, you know, they're the ones who ultimately have to. Consider issuing a jurisdictional, it's what's called a jurisdictional determination, so under law, they're the ones who confirm whether. You know, particular area is classified as a wetland or not, so before any activity, before any grading or trenching is done. They'll, they'll sign it off, they've already reviewed it and, you know, on a preliminary basis have approved this, they just had a couple of issues on the staff, on the report itself, they wanted. You know, to meet their requirements, but, yeah, there won't be any activity. Grading activity until they actually sign that jurisdictional determination. So, yeah, that was a good.
Any other questions for Liz? Not hearing any, okay, open it up to public comment. So, Katie, we flash all that information back up there, please, for anybody at home wants to call in and talk about this thing. And Katie, do we have anybody that's already called in or wants to talk about this project?
We have not had any comments written or verbal so far.
That's why we're having this moment of awkward silence, everybody enjoy the rain.
Yes.
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 It was greatly appreciated.
Feels a little, it feels good, huh? Nothing? Nothing, okay.
I'll make the motion, we close public comment at this time.
Second.
All right. All right, back to you guys, anybody have anything they want to bring up and talk about? Stephanie, can you hear us yet?
I can hear you, you can't hear me.
I can, never can.
Oh, you can? Oh, my god, okay, sorry.
So we can celebrate today, Stephanie found her voice.
No, I've been, I've been struggling with everything, I don't know what's happening, but I think I'm okay.
You're, you're back.
You're back.
Okay, so since you're back, anything you have, you want to bring up or talk about?
No, I'm good.
Okay. All right, so.
Well, I, Mark.
I'm here, I have no idea why my camera doesn't work, but I'm paying attention.
Yeah, we, you, you weren't here when we, we. Passed this earlier, what, two years ago now? Do you have any questions about this?
No, Liz sent me, I'm not sure if it was additional materials, because it looks a lot like the Witcher engineering document that I have, but I looked through, looked through it, so.
Okay. Good job putting things together.
Hey, somebody put together a motion.
Okay, I'll make the motion to adopt resolution number. P dash two zero two one dash three zero six six. Resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of Fortuna. Amending the Fitz Twin Creek subdivision to add one thousand two hundred and fifty feet of underground sewer line and approving an amended. Mitigated negative declaration of environmental impact.
I'll second that.
There we go. Katie, your turn.
Roll call, Commissioner Blakely.
Yes.
Commissioner Bradley.
Yes.
Commissioner Hallie.
Yes.
Chairman Mobley.
Yes.
And Commissioner Sights.
Yes.
Okay, there you go. Sounds like we did it. So we're back to you, anything good going on in the city that we need to talk about?
I don't have anything new, we're busy. I think, I think there are a lot of good things going on in the city and everything is really. Seems like things are really growing and flourishing and I think there's a lot of activity, you know, that were. Released from our isolation. I know that the rodeo and the auto expo were huge hits and really well run.
And that was a lot of fun, everybody, seeing everybody out.
Yeah, it really was. So I think it's just more of the same for the rest of the summer. And if anyone has any questions about any activities. Let me know. That's it.
All right, well, we're looking for another motion.
I'll make the motion that we adjourn.
It's a good motion.
Roll call, vote, Commissioner Blakely.
Yes.
Commissioner Bradley.
Yes.
Commissioner Hallie.
Yes.
Chairman Mobley.
Please.
And Commissioner Sights.
Yes.
All right, everybody. Good night.
Thank you.
Good night.